All right, it is 5:30 on February 13th, 2025. I'm going to call this meeting of the Morton County Commission to order. Our first item of business will be our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll call the roll. Commissioner Zach Meier?
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tokash?
Here.
Commissioner Morrell?
Here.
And myself, Commissioner Bame, are all present, along with Auditor Ron up here at the front desk, Sheriff Kirkmeier, and State's Attorney Copy in the back of the room. Next, we'll have approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve the agenda as printed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the minutes of the previous meeting on January 28th, 2025.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of the Morton County Commission on January 28th, 2025. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner Zach Meier, you had your bills this month?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, and the bills appeared to be in order, and I would move for their approval.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the bills and payroll. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Zach Meier?
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tokash?
Yes.
Commissioner Morrell?
Yes.
And myself, Commissioner Bame, yes. Motion carries. Thank you. We will move right into our agenda tonight. First item will be Don LaFleur with some abatements.
Okay. First abatements we have up is abatement 6672 through 6673. This comes from the city of Mandan. They are correcting one of their assessments. They were assessing a garage that is no longer present and also making some other building characteristic changes for tax years 2023 and 2024.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve abatements number 6672, 6673 for reassessment.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve abatement 6672 for 2023 and 6673 for 2024 for reassessment in the city of Mandan. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I guess, Don, I... So do they assess like those greenhouses that are there? How... Do you know how that works?
Greenhouses, no matter where they're located, are not taxable.
Okay.
Unless you're actually having customers come into the greenhouse, then you can tax it. It's like that one south Italian that used to be there. I think they closed up now. They had a number of different greenhouses. We're not taxing any of them, but the one where they had the customers coming in to pick up the product and sell it, that one we were taxing. Otherwise, greenhouses are always considered non-taxable because it's agricultural.
But I walk into those greenhouses and I take stuff out of there and I go to the till and I pay for it.
Then that one would be taxable, yes. But you would have to ask City of Mandan whether they're taxing it.
I guess I was just curious, because that's what you do when you go to a greenhouse, is that you...
The one you go into would be taxable, but ones where they just have the plants growing, but you don't actually go in there, those would be exempt.
Okay.
But the one where you're actually walking in and picking up product, that would be taxable.
But when you go to Faulkner's, you actually do go into one of those greenhouses?
One of them.
Yes, one of them.
And that one, you would tax.
Okay. Okay, I was just curious as how that worked.
Yep. It's kind of a special rule on greenhouses that doesn't follow everything else.
Okay, all right.
Commissioner Buckley, just a question, clarify. You're talking, you could go into any greenhouse?
No, I was talking about this particular business.
Okay. But are there multiple buildings?
Yes. At this greenhouse, yes.
And you could go into multiple buildings and pull product?
Yes.
Okay, so is that...
Anything where you can go in and pull product would be taxable under the code.
Okay, so am I misunderstanding as that this may not be appropriate?
I don't think this has anything to do with the greenhouses. I think that was a side question she was asking.
Okay.
As I understand it, this was a garage, not a greenhouse.
It's not there anymore.
Okay, yeah.
But she's correct. The greenhouse, you have their sale building, and then you walk around the corner into that first greenhouse. The next one you never really get into because it's usually blocked off. So. Spend enough money in there, I should know.
I know.
Is there any further discussion? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Now we're going to get into a series of homesteads again. First one up is for Morton County for 2023, just one of them, 6685.
Motion to approve abatement number 6685 for homestead tax credit. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve abatement 6685 for 2023, Morton County Homestead Credit Abatement. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Staying in 2023, but now moving to the city of Hebron, we just have one again, 6686.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve abatement 6686 for 2023 in the city of Hebron, homestead abatement.
Second. Oh, go ahead, Ray.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve abatement 6686 for 2023 abatement in the city of Hebron for homestead credit. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Final one for 2023, we have the city of Mandan, that is 6687.
Move to approve abatement number 6687 as a homestead credit to the city of Mandan.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve abatement 6687 for 2023, city of Mandan Homestead Credit Abatement. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Moving to 2024, going back to city of Hebron, we just have one again, 6688.
Motion to approve abatement number 6688 for homestead tax credit. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve abatement 6688 for 2024, city of Hebron Homestead Credit. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. We had one for 2024 for the city of New Salem, that is 6689.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve 2024 city of New Salem Homestead Abatement 6689.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve abatement 6689 for 2024 city of New Salem Homestead Credit. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, and then for 2024 for the city of Mandan, we have four of them, 6690 through 6693.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve abatements number 6690 through 6693 for homestead credit for the city of Mandan.
Second.
It's moved and seconded to approve abatement 6690, 6691, 6692, and 6693 for 2024 city of Mandan Homestead Credit. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
And our final one for the homestead credits at least is moving to 2025. This is for mobile homes, just one there, 6694.
Motion to approve abatement number 6694 for mobile home homestead tax credit. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve abatement 6694 for a 2025 mobile home homestead credit. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, final one's going to take a little bit of explanation. It's abatement 6695. This is for the primary residence credit. The way that worked was people applied in January through March. The state sent a file to the county on... in June 1st, and they sent an updated file in August. This particular property was not included in those files, but the homeowner contacted the state. They had a confirmation number. The state verified that, yes, they did apply, they were eligible, they should have gotten it. But the county did not apply it because they weren't in the files that we received and uploaded to TaxWise, so it was not on their tax bill. So what you are approving here is no adjustment to their valuation of the property. That stays the same. But you are approving a $500 refund because their tax bill was high enough that they get the full 500. So you're just approving a $500 refund to them for the primary residence credit that we will then subsequently collect from the state in North Dakota. Did I get any of that wrong, Don, from your understanding of it all?
I'll put it down.
Because we don't know why this one was missed. The state isn't very forthcoming to either Don Rowan or myself regarding that, but it was missed.
We all make mistakes.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve 2024 primary resident credit abatement 6695 for 2024.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve abatement 6695 for 2024, approval of 2024 primary residence credit refund. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Don. Next up, we have Mr. Russburg.
Good evening, Chairman Bame, fellow commissioners and auditoron. Wanted to give you a background on our cybersecurity plan for the county, and then I have NRG technical people here in case we have any questions. Just to give you a little background, about three years ago, the Department of Homeland Security in the state came out with a cybersecurity grant that we were eligible to apply for at local government level, and they were saying that probably be a perpetual grant over the next three, four years. So our office sat down and developed a strategic plan, and we built it into three phases. So Phase 1, in December of '22, we applied for our first cybersecurity federal grant from DHS and the state because the state IT department was working as a peer evaluator on our application to make sure we were doing it right. And at that time, the focus was on a new computer business system server and a backup system. We're working with Don. We were on a schedule to buy one, I think, the following year, but we took advantage of the grant to get a new server to upgrade our IT structure. So that grant was approved in March of 2023 for a period ending in November of 2025. They're normally two-year timeframes. So that grant was for 80% federal, 10% state, and then 10% local match. So we went into that project with a total cost of $30,456. We worked with NRG on that through... to buy Dell equipment and then installation of the server and the backup. So the federal share on that, or the federal and state share on that particular grant was $28,933. And Morton County's cost share on that was $1,523. So a cost savings to Morton County and actually the taxpayers on that one was $28,933. And then the project was closed out in January of 2024 by the installation of the backup and the server, and then I closed out the paperwork through the state, so we were reimbursed back for that one. Okay, so Phase 2, in part of our three-year strategic plan for cybersecurity, is in September of 2024 of last year, we implemented the multi-factor authentication process in our computer systems for all of the Outlook email accounts. And the goal there was to reduce hackers and scammers from getting into our email system. So I think you're familiar with how that works, but a lot of banks, a lot of the people we do business with now, you're doing an email process with them, they'll send you a code or something, email or text, and you have to enter the code in to know that, verify that you're actually the person doing business with them. And so that's the same thing with our computer systems now, so somebody can't just get in and start fooling around in the backbone of our system. Phase 3 is where I'm coming for you tonight is, in August of '23, our office applied for another federal-state cybersecurity grant to implement what's called the Microsoft 365 Government Community Cloud Platform. And part of that is to transition from the current .org website domain to the .gov domain. And working with NRG and other people that we've talked to is, if... and you... I think you've seen that if we have a .org account, it's easier for people to come in and emulate that, like phishingers and scammers. I think Chairman Bame, we've worked with you. We'll get an email once in a while that says, Chairman Bame, we need to talk to you right away. Open up the following file. Well, it's a scamming and a phishing attempt because they're using the .org domain. When we go to the .gov domain under this new platform, there's more firewalls that they can't get in. It's less chance of them getting into our system and looking like they're a county official or hacking into our records or our email account. So that's the juncture we're at now. So that grant was approved and awarded in January of 2024 for a period ending November of 2026. And that grant was 80% federal, 4.55% from the state, and a 15.45% local match for Morton County. So then our office had to develop requests for proposals for at least three vendors to go out and tell them what this project entailed. And then we got those all back. The deadline on that was January 22nd. We got those RFPs back, and then upon receipt and review, the RFPs, NRG Technologies, was selected as the prime contractor, and they came in with a quote of $9,515, which was way under the original thought process. So the total cost of that project is going to be $9,515, plus maybe some licenser costs that will build into it. We were a grant... we were allowed $11,000 under that grant, but we came way in under, so we can build in the initial licensing cost as part of this, you know, to cover that. So the federal share on that's going to be $7,612. The state share is going to be $432.94, and Morton County's share will be $1,476. Again, another cost savings to Morton County, and the taxpayers of $8,045. And the projected closeout for that is May and June of 2025. So what I sent you in the read-ahead packet is, at the bottom of that, is kind of the summation of the last phase of this project. The recommendation is you, you know, approve the... to move forward the project, to enhance Morton County's information systems and better deter cybersecurity and breaches to the internet. I have representatives here from NRG in case there's any technical questions. They just completed a project about three months ago for Dunn County, doing the same type of system where they went from a .org domain to a .gov. So in case there's any questions, they'll be able to help you out and answer questions on that. Any technical questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Ray.
Joe, would you mind explaining, giving insight as far as the timeframe for implementation and completion? As well as, as we talked earlier too, is what happens with all the lingering, the .org, how that migrates in after the implementation?
Sure, I'll let them address it because they... it's going to be totally transparent to the users. They go into the back end of the system, and everything that's going to continue to come in on the .org domain will automatically roll over to the .gov domain. And then over time, when our employees send out a new... or an email, that new .gov will be attached, so then they'll know that, you know, we've had a domain change. So it'll fix itself over time, and NRG will monitor that in case there's any hiccups or we have any loss of coverage. Did I cover that about right?
Mostly. I can get more technical.
Yeah.
So the way it works is you will have a new tenant which can hold the .gov. And then the old tenant that holds .org will both exist at the same time, so if something comes in here, I'll forward it to the new tenant. And then after everybody's comfortable, I'll close this tenant and then add .org to this one, so that if you email either one, it'll come to your new email box. So there will be no downtime noticeable by anybody sending email. So... And both .org and .gov will work through the whole process. But once this one starts.
Could you expand on any potential pitfalls or drawbacks of making this change?
Um... Some of the pitfalls we ran into when we were doing Dunn is, we do have to touch every machine and every phone that people use, so it's a little bit tedious for the... during the transition window, you go through and like make sure you're on it. Something we didn't realize when we were setting it up the first time around is, you can't have any other email app... emails in your Outlook app on your phone. So if you have like your MidCo email and you add this one, it'll kick your MidCo email out of there. You'll have to use a different application to do that because GCC has extra security that prevents you from anything being inside the same application essentially. And another pitfall is we... you'll have to reset up MFA for every user because you're in a new account, so. There's a lot of tedium in the process, but there isn't a lot of like... it won't be a loss of service or anything, and we won't lose any email.
So you're saying like updating this one would kick my Gmail out?
Yeah, if you have like your Gmail account in Outlook, it would kick that out of Outlook. You'll have to use the actual Gmail app.
I think where it's at, I don't know.
Any other questions?
So as an example, I do have a MidCo account, but it goes... it doesn't come into my Outlook, so I'll still have to use that.
It probably comes into like your native mail app right now?
Yes.
That'll stay there and be fine.
That'll stay there and be fine. Because I was hoping I could consolidate it all because I got to check two email... well, it's not that hard, but I got to push the buttons.
But that's going to stay true.
Okay.
I'm fairly ignorant about all the, you know, the different apps that county employees use and everything. Are they comfortable with all of that? That's not going to...
None of that should be affected. They're all going to continue using the same applications and just have a higher level of security in the backend.
When he mentioned MFA, that said multi-factor authentication again we talked about. And there was some fear by the employees when we went into this that every day that when they came in in the morning to log on, they'd have to go in and use that code. But it's a one-time deal, and once you use that code, you're in. The only time you have to re-enter that is if you change your password or if you do something like you go out and you come back in and then... so it's pretty easy to do. It's not that complicated once you're in the system. So like he said, when we make the transition, we might have to go in... all go in and re-establish, you know, in the multi-factor authentication. But that's just another security measure to really make sure that everybody's, you know, copacetic with what we're doing. Oh, yeah, and then the other thing he mentioned about... So what I see is a little bit of a time constraint is the Sheriff's Department and the Highway Department, because if you have an Outlook email account without a workstation computer and it's physically coming into your cell phone, they'll have to touch every one of those. So with the Highway Department, we'll have to work on the outline, county employees that have just a phone email, and the Sheriff's Department with the deputies, a lot of them don't have a desk station email, but they do have it on their phone. So they'll... we'll have to work out a schedule with John Seike and the sheriff to get the physical phone and so that they can make this all work. But I think you did that with Dunn County and it worked out okay, so.
What is the... is there a cost difference? Your service fee per month or whatever, being in .org versus .gov? No fee difference monthly or anything like that?
Um, once everything is set in place... Once everything is set in place, the Microsoft licensing is going to be about equivalent to what it is right now. Um, there's a difference between yearly licenses and monthly licenses. We're going to start out with monthly just to make sure that everything is all good and everything, but then we can go to yearly, and there would be a cost reduction for that. So...
Okay.
And then that'll get it to about where we're at right now with licensing.
As reasonable would stand, monthly would be higher price if you stay there, so.
Yes, yeah.
That's just the way that works.
And part of the plan of us implementing this is, once we start getting things going, is we're going to have a few yearly licenses, and then once we're comfortable, we'll try to... we'll get everything over to yearly as quick as we can to help out with that cost reduction.
Okay.
Basically, once the bugs are confidently removed and move forward with it.
Yeah, and when I looked at it yesterday based on some figures that Jacob had sent Dunn, per license, I think the increase was only like 40 cents per license. But that can come down once we get into the annual, because when...
Yeah.
When we do it annually, Microsoft gives you a reduction of a yearly rate versus a monthly rate. So it'll even itself out when it's all said and done. But I look at it as sort of like an insurance policy. If you don't do it and you get hacked and it takes your system down, look at the time of lost productivity and damage to the things that people can get access to. So it's a pretty good cost savings for the county. Any more questions?
Just one final one for me. I'm not too concerned with the transition. I know it should go smoothly. It helps me that you've done this other counties as well, but if something blows up, when I say blow up, I'm talking more along the Highway Department, things like that, where, you know, working with some of their other systems, if there's conflicts and things... additional things we need to work out, are there any additional charges with all of that? Or just all in?
We have a service contract with NRG. They're our primary contractor for all of our computer systems. So that would kind of all fall under the umbrella of our maintenance. The only time that we get billed from NRG for non-services is when we buy equipment or it's something unique that's maybe not under... covered under warranty. But by and large, they're really a good company, and they come and take care of us all the time if we have issues.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions?
Just a comment for the commission, for the listening public is, you might remember back, Auditor Ron and I and myself sat in at NRG's presentation at Association of Counties when this was a topic. And so it's been about three years I've been working this piece, so it's nice to see it coming to fruition. And as far as that multi-factor authentication, that... I've noticed a significant decrease in the phishing and the spam that's come through.
Right.
Significant. So this will... this will actually help lock a lot more out, because again, it's just extra firewalls.
You know, and one of the things we did, I think it was two years ago, our office conducted a tabletop exercise, a cybersecurity exercise, which really helped because we educated the users in our email system to what to spot and what to look for as far as phishing and scamming and, you know, that type of activity. And I think I talked to Wendy, our risk manager and HR person, and we were doing some tests on that, sending out some messages to try to trick them into, you know, to going in there. And she said we were really low on the number of people that made mistakes. They were really cautious and, you know, vigilant about what they did, so we didn't have any great hiccups or take the system down or, you know... Like some... well, you see it every day in the news. Some company gets hacked and they buy ransomware, and now they hold them hostage for a million dollars to get their data back. We've never ran into that yet, so.
Knock on laminate.
Okay, with that in your packet, I put down a recommendation and kind of a suggested motion, so. So if you see feasible, I'd like to get you, we can move forward. Commissioner Bame, I think you asked a question about, or somebody did about the anticipated, excuse me, anticipated timeframe for this. So working with NRG, we're probably looking at probably April, May, this whole thing will be complete. And then we can close out the grant and get our money back, so. It doesn't take that long once we get moving.
And you just got the grant awarded in January here, so.
Right, yeah, we've got until, like I said, November of '26, we'll be well ahead of our grant cycle and close it out. And I, I'd always like to brag to the, to the state when we send in the closeout that we come in under budget and under, under time, so.
Oh, we appreciate the work you do filling these grants out.
Well, we might as well take advantage of them.
That's, that's just it.
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept a quote of $9,515 from NRG and complete the internet domain migration from .org to .gov, as presented here. The cost shared to Morton County of $1,470.06.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded to accept the quote of $9,515 from NRG and complete the internet domain migration from .org to .gov, as presented, with a cost shared to Morton County of $1,470.06. Is there any further discussion or questions? Any further discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Okay, thanks for your time.
Thank you for coming. Mr. Kirkmire.
Good evening, Chairman Bame, commissioners, Auditor Ron, this must be like grant night or something, so that's good.
Yeah.
But what, if you remember talking about, I don't know, in December, we applied for the, the court facilities grant. And if we got the grant, we, the 75, 25% contribution match for the county. And anyway, we applied for the grant, then the grant was awarded, which is good news. So to move forward and replacing that auto-clear machine, we need our 25, so the grant we were awarded was $19,845.07. Our share is 6,615.25. And my request is just that we will take that 25% contribution out of the sheriff's asset forfeiture fund.
This is the machine right by the front door.
Correct.
Yeah.
So I just need a, you know, a request, a motion for approval to use the funding.
Commissioners, have any questions for Sheriff Kirkmire?
We kind of hit a lot of this on, on the original presentation, so.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve $6,615.25 expenditure out of the sheriff's asset forfeiture, forfeiture fund to cover the 25% match for the courthouse facilities improvement grant that was awarded.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded to approve the grant from the, funding from the asset forfeiture fund in the sheriff's office, as stated by Commissioner Morrell, we'll go that way. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
That's what happens when you give a good presentation the first time.
Well, I, I appreciate that, we'll, we'll move on, so.
Thank you, Kyle. Auditor Ron. Nothing there, does any commissioner have anything else good for the order? Seeing none, we are adjourned.